Good evening. Welcome to the town council meeting, the monthly meeting on June 22nd, 2023. Let's have a roll call. Marjorie Austin.
Here.
Larry Kuning.
Here.
Bill Goldsmith is here. Sandy Sturgill.
Here.
Mary Hansen.
Here.
Alana Court.
Here.
Having a quorum, will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's an awkward spot.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like for the record to reflect that Beth did call and say that she was sick and was not able to.
Yes, thank you. I apologize for not saying that myself. Moving on, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion is moved and seconded. Let's have a vote. Marjorie?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
I say yes. Alana?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Sandy?
Yes.
Motion passes. First item is Delegate Keith Hodges giving us a legislative update. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry I greeted these two folks yet, I just wanted to say how are you all doing?
Good, how are you?
Well, thank you. This is Urbana. It's informal, but thank you all so much. This is the fun part of my job as a legislator, going around talking to town councils and groups, and it's a lot of fun. And first, you know, I'll try to move quickly. If I go too long, Mayor just cut me off. My girls like to say I was.
You've got three minutes.
Mine's all let you know.
But they like to say I talk a little bit, a little bit too much. But first, I want to say thank you for what you do. Local government, it's tough. It is very tough. And chairing county, cities, and towns, I watch it and I see it. And this is where the rubber hits the road, and the decisions you make, I believe, are more difficult than ones we make in Richmond. Can't thank enough, all of you enough for what you do. So, kind of a little bit of an update on the session, and then a little bit on some of the initiatives that I'm working on. Just to let you know, the committees that I serve on now, of course, being a pharmacist, I serve on the Health Committee, serve on the Communications, Technology, and Innovations. They're looking at broadband and different issues. The Appropriations Subcommittee, which is responsible for the state budget, and we'll talk about that a little bit. And then also, of course, county, cities, and towns, which I chair. And I will tell you, my number-one priority in that committee, and so far when talking to our localities, my number-one priority is not letting any unfunded mandates get through that, and that passes down to our localities. And we've been very successful the last couple of years. Of course, I also serve by statute on the Rappahannock River Basin Commission, Joint Commission on Healthcare, Virginia Workforce Development Authority, and recently reported to the Water Commission, State Water Commission as well, which is very important, especially being in the eastern Virginia groundwater management area. So, we adjourned February 25th, 2023. We had roughly 3,000 bills that we dealt with in a 45-day session, plus dealing with the budget. It was very, very quickly. But we adjourned without passing actually the most important bill, and that's state budget. And there's some reasons behind that that I'll get into. But, you know, with our budget, and this is a two-year biannual budget, so Virginia has a two-year budget. So even if we don't pass it by the July 1st deadline, because we're moving into the second year, government will still continue to function. It's just the amendments that we make to that. It's projected we'll have roughly a $3 billion budget surplus. And the reason for the holdup is, in the House, where I am, in the Senate, there's disagreement on what to do with that money. The House has taken the position, we have in the governor's position, to have $1.1 billion returned to taxpayers. You know, many of us feel that that is very important, especially in times with inflation, put money in people's pockets where they need it the most right now. But it is frustrating for our localities that depend on us to make those decisions. Unfortunately, the primaries got in, was really the holdup, and there were some folks on the other side of the chamber that didn't want to move forward and make those decisions, tough decisions on the budget, because they felt it would interfere, you know, with their election. Now those have passed, we can move forward with adopting the budget. Even if we don't meet and adopt it by July 1st, we'll be able to adopt that and go retroactively back to July 1st. So we are excited, we're at least, we'll start moving forward. The Confreese hopefully will be meeting very, very soon to finish this, very important, and get this very important bill passed. We've taken the approach, you know, since I've been in the House, to take a very conservative approach with budgeting, especially with the COVID pandemic, to take that approach because we were very scared of a recession that would follow. And I think it was a good approach. We still, with economic uncertainty, and even though with signs of inflation easing up, we are still trying to take a very conservative approach in the House and overall. But we try to put money into one-time expenses, pay-as-you-go without borrowing any money, because we, of course, we don't know if there's going to be an economic downturn. So pay-as-you-go is the best approach. And with that $1.1 billion, there are certain revenue estimates that have to be met and certain benchmarks that have to be met. So we took a conservative approach with that as well. One thing we did for our public sector, for our state employees, there was already a 5% raise in both years of the budget. We gave an additional 2% with inflation because that 5% was pretty much taken away. So we gave an additional 2%. That's also to local employees, K-12 teachers, and also K-12 support staff for a $1,000 bonus for support staff as well. Even though we didn't pass the entire budget, the House, we actually came up with an idea to pass what we call a skinny budget. Four major areas that we wanted to move forward with, that we could, you know, work with the other side and the other chamber to be able to pass. One of those dealt with our local schools, with the grocery tax being rolled back. DOE, when they calculated the local aid to education, didn't enter that into their formula. So it left a shortfall. We stepped up, we made the localities whole. That was very important to do. So we made our localities whole, and doing that roughly, I believe, $125 million. We also put over $900 million in a constitutionally required revenue stabilization fund to ensure that, you know, if there is a recession, that we have the money and protect our triple-A bond rating, highly coveted triple-A bond rating in Virginia. We also put $250 million into Virginia retirement system. We've worked very hard over the years to make sure that that's, that is whole, and that's working very, very well. And then we put $100 million into cost overrun projects because of inflation. As we know, it's cost overruns in many of the state projects. We put $100 million into that. So when I look at the budget, there are some main principles that I like to follow. Number one, keep taxes low. Ensure our localities remain whole with no unfunded mandates. Have Virginia businesses and families to be very, more competitive, and to make Virginia more competitive with our, for families and businesses. Invest in education. It's very important, especially with the learning loss from the pandemic. And also invest in law enforcement. There are three areas right now that, and I'll talk a little bit about that, but as far as employment issues and shortages, law enforcement, education, and healthcare are the big three. So some particular legislation of interest, of course, you know, the VATT grants that move forward with broadband, they are working, and there have been some folks that want to change those, change that formula, and it frightens me that some of those dollars would go to the urban areas, and we've been successful fighting that off because we need, it's here where we need the funding. And we've had some good successes here in the Middle Peninsula with those grants for broadband funding. Broadband's so important now for those that want to live here, to telecommute, for school, you name it, and for business. And real estate, I talked to the Realtors this morning. The first question they get, do you have broadband? So it's so important to the region. We had a landmark bill dealing with, they call it the Dominion Bill, that reforms how Dominion is actually regulated to stabilize the rates, so people have certainty with their electric bills, and also to invest in future infrastructure. We don't think about it very often, but the Interstate 64 corridor is very important to this region. The number of commuters that we have that go to work in Richmond and Hampton Roads is, it's a tremendous number. So finally, we have the project moving forward to widen the 23-mile corridor between Lightfoot and New Kent. And not only that will that help us, but our port of Virginia is dependent on that. We now have the largest project in Virginia's history with the expansion of the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel. Tying that in with the 64 expansion, that's going to be, have a tremendous impact on our port of Virginia. I believe, I can't remember the number, it's something like one in eight jobs are dependent on the port of Virginia. So that's really going to help us here in the entire region. Of course, healthcare is very important to me. And I mentioned I serve on the, actually, serve on the Subsidiary Council, Joint Commission on Healthcare. It's our number-one employer here in the Middle Peninsula, by far, as far as private sector. Government is our largest, between our schools and our local governments. Healthcare, of course, we're in a healthcare workforce crisis right now. If you look at, you know, nurses, we have one of the best programs here in the state at Rappahannock Community College. But there's such a shortage of nurses that our visiting nursing agencies are paying up to $200 an hour to our health systems. And you think about that for a minute. The health systems reimbursements are still here, but they're being billed on this end. They can't absorb that. And it's across the board, across healthcare, and I'm seeing it in pharmacy, we're seeing it in mental health. So how do we solve that problem? Well, and this is an opportunity for our kids to stay here. We're getting older and grayer here in the Middle Peninsula. You typically think of the Secretary of Health solving this problem, but Secretary of Health is over the agencies, Department of Health, and the regulatory boards. Understands it, but it's, that's not where it belongs. So, you know, talked about, well, it actually belongs under Secretary of Labor. It's actually a workforce issue. But then you hop over, I was talking about the reimbursements, which fall under Secretary of Commerce with Medicaid and insurance reform. And then you need a K-12 pipeline. And when you're looking at healthcare, you start to talk to these kids, and as young as get great, if they want to go into healthcare. So you need that K-12 track to our community colleges and our universities. I created a position in the governor's office that just works on this healthcare workforce issue across these secretaries, and to overcome the obstacles and barriers, and also on the healthcare workforce development authority. And we have the largest comprehensive study for healthcare moving forward right now. We've gone through, we're in our second phase. We should have deliberals for that next week, I believe, and then we have our third phase ready for the session, to be able to try to solve this and make an investment in Virginia to solve this problem. Of course, mental health, tremendous problem. We have one psychiatrist here in the Middle Peninsula that serves six counties, plus their support staff. And it is a mental health crisis. And actually, of course, you know, we talked about the TDOs and the problems that we're having with our local law enforcement, our localities taking law enforcement off of the road for hours and hours and days dealing with this. Actually, have formed a work group and have that moving forward with our health systems, our law enforcement, some of our localities, to solve this problem and bring it together with CSV to overcome some of the challenges that we have. Administration really likes it, and they want to try to duplicate what I'm doing across the state to try to solve this problem. They're working on some things. The governor has a package moving forward. It's a $230 million mental health initiative. That's from the top down, I'm working from the ground up, and we're going to try to solve it somewhere in between. So we're faced with a number of challenges on that end. So I'm going to try to move on to some of my initiatives. When I was first elected, you know, my girls were actually, Chloe was probably 12, I think, or younger, 11, and Ella was 7. The one thing that concerned me the most was when they grow up, at least give them the opportunities to stay and to live and work here. That's the biggest challenge. If they want to go somewhere else, it's up to them, but at least give them the opportunities to live and work here. Started to dig into this, and you look at the Middle Peninsula, all six counties, 75% of the workforce drives out of the district every day, 75%. The folks that stay behind, the nine-to-five folks, we have the lowest wages in the state, lower than Southwest Virginia. And we don't have the higher-paying jobs for them to stay. Telecommuting can help, but when you're younger, it doesn't quite work like that. But at least give them, you know, the ability to stay and to work here. And I'm trying to develop a different type of economy here. And we talk about economic development. Everyone's looking for that big win, the industrial parks and so forth, and I'm trying to look at things a little bit differently. I look at the, I always look at the scientists in me, I'll take the negative and try to make a positive out of it. I think firmly believe that, and I live by that. For instance, solar, and this will help the localities, getting off track a little bit on the job part, but with solar that we have, and you see these solar fields, you know, around the state, and when they were moving forward, you can do it either by right or conditional use, I believe, through zoning. The localities were getting very little out of these projects. One project, proposed project, they were barely getting enough to pay a paraprofessional in the high school in that county. But when you look at that, where's that electricity going? Where is it being sold? It's going to Northern Virginia business that is creating hundreds, if not thousands of jobs and huge economic wealth. Our green space is very valuable to them. That's the case, then pay us for it. Introduced legislation, was able to get that passed, that it allows localities to negotiate through a siting agreement. And it's not a proffer, but you can negotiate through a siting agreement. If you need broadband, write me a chat. Investment in our schools, write me a chat. Since that bill was signed now, that we have roughly $650 million that have gone into some of these rural localities. Not saying whether solar's right or wrong, but if we're going to have it, we need to get something out of it. And that's kind of where I'm going with a lot of the initiatives that I'm working on. Of course, water, even though I'm in healthcare, I've turned in kind of the water guru in the General Assembly. Whether it deals with stormwater, groundwater, septic, flooding, resiliency, all of that, it kind of goes through me, and I don't even serve on the Ag Committee, but it's still going through me. Water creates a tremendous challenge. It is a wonderful opportunity for tourism here, but for our homeowners and the folks that live here every day, it's a tremendous challenge. I am actually moving forward and creating a resiliency cluster and jobs and economic development just around resiliency. And put it in perspective, and these are baby steps. I mean, this is something I've had a vision that I've been working on for quite a while. And over a period of time, so let's just back up to living shorelines. So you're all familiar with living shorelines and protecting a property. Preferred method of protecting property, best thing for water quality, and I want to protect the bay more than anyone else, lived here and growing up here all my life. But we need to do it in the right way. Now, living shorelines are very expensive, up to $650 a linear foot. So you're looking at, what is that? So it's 10-foot, I mean, it's $500 for 10 feet. Very expensive. Average homeowner, we have a number of folks that are land-rich, cash-poor. How can we save them money? So I was able to tweak the language in the living shorelines bill on other structural materials, the materials you can use in these living shorelines that can use other technologies, newer technologies, that can reduce the cost up to 80% many times. One of those, actually, we can use the dredge spoils. And you can actually, you probably, not in your head, you can make an aggregate product out of it. Some of you have probably heard this, an aggregate product can cost less than concrete. Oysters will strike on it much, much better than they will overgrain. Oysters don't strike on granite, but they're used in living shorelines. Doesn't make any sense. So using this product in living shorelines, and because of streamlined, actually, the dredge regulations through VMRC have been able to prop up money in the budget now for dredging of our creeks. Five million in the House and the Senate, we should be pretty good there to set up a dredge program in the Middle Peninsula and the eastern shore. So we're going to have an endless supply of dredge spoils. We have a number of creeks that we're working on here in the Middle Peninsula to be able to prop this up. And if you look at just the impact on property values, I think, I can't remember, it's a large, very large percentage, it's up to like 14% for every one-foot change in depth. It's impacting property values as well. So that's money coming in into the locality just on real estate assessments. So we can prop these creeks up, get them dredged. Number one, it takes Army Corps of Engineers out of the equation, which is a huge holdup because you have to have spoil sites. So now, because we've tweaked that living shorelines bill, and we've got the dredging over here, we have 30 companies that want to do business in Virginia and come to Virginia because of that. We have 18 that want to locate here locally. We have a vision of propping up, and I call it a resiliency industrial park, and actually work in the administration for a resiliency center. So it fits in with who we are. It doesn't change who we are, protects us, protects water quality, and it creates jobs because then you're looking at universities, colleges, engineers, good-paying jobs, contractors, and helping property owners as well. Doing the same thing on the permitting side, where a lot of these permits get wrapped up with VIMS making recommendations to VMRC. Of course, VIMS does great work, but they don't have the expertise and don't have the coastal engineers. So I've opened it up for all Sea Grant universities, be able to give input to VMRC or any state agency on resiliency projects. One of the things, I won't even talk about the cannabis bill, I got a lot of press out of that, but it, we need to solve that problem because right now you're seeing it on the street, it's legal to possess it. You can't buy it legally, but 80% of the purchasers are coming from organized crime and propping up human trafficking and so forth. The legalization's not going away, but we've got to find a way to rein it in. So I'll just leave it at that. Now, one thing I'm very proud of from this past session is my blue catfish bill. If you're familiar with blue catfish, they are a menace. DWR put them in the rivers back in the late 70s, early 80s. The state record now, I believe, somewhere around 140 pounds.
Wow.
And when you start to go up river, you start to get up in the Rappahannock or around Tapahannock, it's 75% of the fish biomass. They're catching them 70 and 80 pounds up there now. And when I say they eat, they eat everything.
And they don't taste good either.
Oh, they're delicious. They are absolutely delicious.
So we created the problem?
We created, yes, they created the problem. They wanted a large trophy fish. And it did very, very well for them, and, you know, the anglers in a large industry, you know, upriver, and now they're not getting as big because there's so many of them. But it did create that industry. Problem is, is they didn't realize how saltwater tolerant they've become. They're catching them out here now, they're in the bay. If you go down, I know a boy on the York River, just off Gloucester, just up from Claybank, I believe, catching probably 12,000 pounds a week. And they eat everything. They eat rockfish, they eat shad, they eat crabs. I can show you a picture, a guy sent me a picture, it's probably a 10-pound, 12-pound fish, had 25 crabs in it, some as long as six inches. And it's the number-one threat to the bay. And they eat Minhaiden, I always called them bunkers growing up, and I don't know what a Minhaiden was until I was in the General Assembly. So the peanut bunkers is what I call them, the small ones. They spend the first year of their life cycle up in fresh and saltwater. I pulled together, everyone's studied this for a long time, pulled together the Sea Grant universities, they're with the Rice Center, got a big presentation out of it and trying to develop a plan for this. And our analysis, and no one's been able to say differently, they eat enough peanut bunkers a year to prevent a million tons of Minhaiden from reaching adult size a year. And you can imagine how many crabs they eat. And to me, it's the number-one threat to the bay. The problem is, and they are actually delicious, they are, they are, they are good, much better than a farm-raised catfish by far. And the problem is, is the USDA requires an inspector to be on site for wild catfish, and that came out of the farm bill a number of years ago, where the wildcat, the farm-raised guy said, you know what, they're not safe to process. But they are. USDA is not finding any problems. Hopefully, we're going to get that permanently fixed with the next farm bill, but that's going to take some time at the federal level. But I was able to pull in Congressman Whitman, and then Secretary Lauer, Secretary of Ag and Forestry, spent a number of years up at USDA. And we pulled USDA on the phone, had some calls, we worked it out, said they're kind of back off, and we have the inspectors, and we'll be able to make it happen. And the problem is, is we only have three processors really in the state, two larger ones and one small one. And we need to incentivize these processors to get up and running. We need flash-freeze facilities, which will open at restaurants, for restaurants, shipping it, you know, year-round market, and then also infrastructure and dollars to the watermen to catch them. So I wanted $4 million. I was able to get $2 million and got Senator Stewart to carry it in the Senate that we put into the, it's the Governor's Blue Catfish Opportunity Fund, I believe. We did away with it, so there's no local match because modeling it after the AFID grants, localities, of course, have to match. So we want to jumpstart this, so there's no local match. It's $250,000 per locality or political subdivision. And I want it here in the Middle Peninsula. This is where I want it, and the jobs created. If we can capture 10% of the blue catfish market in the country, that's 900 to 1,000 jobs.
Absolutely.
900 to 1,000. And we're the epicenter of it, and we're looking at getting it here. So I've been working with Mike Hutt at Marine Products Board. He's already talking to folks around the country, they're the ones that market Virginia seafood, people want it. He already told me, he's got a guy that wants two tractor-trailer loads gutted and frozen a week. Now, we're not going to get rid of them, but we need to put a dent in it and protect the bay. So I'm very excited about that. That was a good win. But I can talk about a lot of things. I may even looking at ways to harvest fragmities and turn that into a product as well, which is a huge threat, and that actually protects the bay. But, you know, our challenges ahead, of course, economic uncertainty, of course, so we need to be very careful in Richmond with how we approach our budget and how we move forward. Of course, redistricting, and of course, we had the primaries yesterday, but if you're familiar with redistricting, Virginia changed quite a bit with their maps. With this last redistricting, it actually ended up in the Supreme Court. You had two special magistrates that drew it, they did not even look at where incumbents live. So what we had is some areas where you had two incumbents that were running against each other, sometimes three in Northern Virginia. And what that's done, it's, what it will do is create a number, an issue where a number of folks aren't going to be coming back to Richmond. I predict we're going to have 37 new members in the House, minimum of 35, probably 37 in the House, 15 in the Senate, maybe 17, we just don't know. And when we, when you read the papers, you typically see the headline grabbers. That's only a small part of what we do. We work very well on a number of issues in the subcommittees where we hash things out and work together. And when you lose that institutional knowledge in the General Assembly, it's going to create, hopefully, it won't create any problems, but it potentially could, and it worries we may have some things slip through. So we need to be very careful as we approach, you know, well, as we, as we move through our, move through the session, but that is a big concern. Of course, Middle Peninsula, the district will change from the 98th to the 68th district, and because we're losing population, the district's getting bigger. So right now, I have all of Gloucester, Matthews, Middlesex, King-Queen, Essex, and King William up to Sweet Hall. I'm picking up the rest of King William. So it's already about seven, whether you go from New Point to Supply, or New Point to Newtown, it's about 72 miles, so I'll know, now I'll go about five miles from Dazwell, well, Kings Dominion. So it's going to be a big district, so. It's fine, it's a lot of fun. I'm on the road a lot, I'm not in town a lot, so you don't see me very much, but I am around. And the best way, if you all have any questions, just call me, I know Garth can reach me 24/7. That's the easiest way. We're flooded with emails, and I love talking to people and working on the issues, but I can't thank you enough for what you do, and sorry to go so long, Mayor. I can keep, I can keep.
I started to gavel you at three minutes, but I thought it was better.
But I can keep talking.
Can we ask? I only had two issues.
Sure.
I thought it was interesting that an asset could be unlimited supply of dredge spoils, but I understand the process.
Yeah.
The other was, because there's a surplus, do you think you can help fund the pool?
I would love to. I would love to. Well, we're still navigating through some of those issues, and we're looking at creating that industrial park, and hopefully, we're going to be talking about having some planning dollars hopefully in the upcoming session to jumpstart.
See, that would be more incentive for your kids to come back.
Oh, sure. That'd be great. Well, I will tell you, growing up, this was the place to go. We were snowed in, we rode dirt road off of dirt road. Shelley was snowed in with Chloe, she was nine months old, no neighbors, we're going to Urbana. So I think there were only two houses, we're saying, one behind the pool and one around. So we ended up in one of them. It has been the best experience growing up for those girls. You know, I tell folks, you know, it's the safest place, the best place, you can turn them loose, they can run the roads. And I can tell you stories after stories, you know, my 11-year-old, I think when she was 11, where was she? Stay in town, she was 11, 12. She was 11, 12. She was on the Urbana Bridge. Shelley was driving out of town with Chloe. Of course, Shelley's stocking her, Shelley, she said, "Alice, what are you doing? You're not in town." Alice said, "The bridge is Urbana, and I still have one, one foot on the bridge." And I have a lot more, many more stories. But it's, it's the best, it is, this is, in the Middle Peninsula, it's the best place to live and to grow up. I didn't know what store-bought jelly was until I was in college. And it's just a great place to live and grow up and to raise your family, and Urbana's been absolutely fantastic for them and a wonderful experience. We were always the destination, and kids come in, and they just loved our man. So any questions or?
Yeah, I do actually.
Yes, ma'am.
What is on the horizon as far as the need that we're going to have for workforce housing? Because that is in short supply already, and if we're, I mean, wonderful creating new industries and more jobs, but what are we going to do?
Sure. And actually, I created, I'm trying to think back two years ago, because on the forefront, I created something for, what was it called? Through the PDC, and I can't remember exactly what I did. That's three or four years ago. It was part of the plan to be able to do that and work on that, especially with a lot of, we have a number of homes that, over the years, have fallen into disrepair, heirs' property and so forth, so there's some mechanisms and things we're looking at, so we don't lose those. And we can revitalize and help our communities and with places to live as well. We actually, we actually, we actually had, gosh, what was the number? Because I've been working on this for a while. And there's too much knowledge. I mean, not too much knowledge, but too much in the back of my brain. Too much, too much buried back there somewhere. We were trying to find all of the homes that are, the abandoned homes. We don't know where they are.
Oh.
We don't, and the localities don't know if people are living there necessarily. And.
There's a whole Facebook page of it.
Yeah. So what we did is, we said, all right, we asked Dominion Power finally, how many, how many places have had their electricity turned off for at least a year? You will be amazed at that number. And I can't remember what the, what the number is, and that's going back. So we're working, trying to work on this, because we want to revitalize those properties and so forth, and that's an opportunity as well to try to, instead of just creating new, let's utilize what we have.
Is that we at the state level, or is that we as the Middlesex?
That's we here.
At the Middlesex level?
Well, at, well, at the, in the Middle Peninsula level.
Middle Peninsula level.
So the entire district. We asked for the entire district. The number was actually astounding.
Huh.
We don't, we don't even know people, they don't even live there. Electricity hasn't been on for a year. So we're, we're working through that to try to, always try, you know, we want to protect those properties, and they're falling in. We don't want them to fall in. We want to protect it and be able to do something different. So, and I'm trying to remember what exactly I did.
It's okay. You'll think of it.
It's baby steps that we're, so we're working on it through the housing and the jobs and the workforce, working with the community college. We were able to get a sonography program going. There was a huge need. We got that propped up at the community college this year.
Yeah, you know, again, if people don't have places to live, it's hard for them to want to accept jobs.
Yeah.
So it's, it's kind of one of those that, you know, there's chicken and an egg, but.
Yeah. It's, it is, but it's, it's a problem. But we, here, we need to look at, we're looking at things a little bit differently to create those opportunities and places to live.
Okay.
I would like to get some more information on the living insurance line.
Sure.
Where can I get that, just from you or?
Call me. I actually called the Planning District Commission.
Okay.
To be able to do that. We're still trying to educate VMRC on this. So anytime you deal, my biggest, one of my biggest challenges, working through bureaucracy, bureaucrats are very, typically very good at saying no. The challenge is, is how to get the yes. And, you know, we're, and that's, that's, many of our, many of our bureaucrats are very good at doing that. So, and I'm not singling out VMRC, it's just a matter of education on how we can get there. And we have an issue now, they're, they're looking, one of the technologies, they're, they're questioning it, but we'll get there. We'll get through it.
Yeah, I would like to.
But the, the big, sure, we can do it, and just get with me, and, but we can do that. The newer technologies, we're navigating through that to get these businesses to now come to Virginia and to educate, you know, our state agencies.
All right.
You know, one, one of the other things that we're working on too, and I almost forgot this, septic, we're the landfill septic systems on the East Coast and the Middle Peninsula. It's not a great reputation to have. And when you think about septic, if you go down to Guinea and Gloucester, and this is all over the district, on a king tide on a, on a sunny day, there are 600 septic systems that are flooded down there. So that's not only, you're not only looking at environmental, but you're also looking at public health, closing oyster grounds, and number of problems. So failed septic systems, it's cost prohibitive for a lot of folks. You're looking at $35,000, $40,000 to put in an alternative system. People can't afford that. They're also flooded. Many of them are in the RPA, that 100-foot buffer, so getting a variance to do something is almost impossible. We have now, was able to receive money in the budget to move forward with a totally above-ground system. All of the treatments above ground, the nitrogen, phosphorus goes into the bay. May have to pump it every two years. And in doing that, if it floods, guess what? Doesn't matter. Doesn't hurt anything. So to put these systems in, it's to design, study, maintain, and try to get these costs down. We think we can get these costs down, maybe around $15,000. That's a game changer. Then what we're looking at is, all right, locality's going to be glad to give somebody a variance. You already have a system in the RPA. Let's give them a variance. Or really, you, you have to change the plumbing, you have to have your black water and your gray water. It's a little, it's a totally different system. But you're protecting the bay, you're protecting the property, you're increasing property values, and it's my goal to have the company locate, locate eventually here and manufacture, create jobs, and install thousands of them that are needed across the Middle Peninsula. And so we're, I look at things a little bit different way sometimes. Always try to take, take that negative in the challenges, let's, let's solve the problem and create some opportunities out of it. So we're working on it.
Thank you.
I can keep talking all night, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry. But this, this is a wonderful place to live and to grow up, so.
Absolutely.
Certainly enjoyed it. My girls have enjoyed it.
Are you all still here?
Still here.
Shelley still here?
Shelley's still here. The only thing that worries me is, you know, now that Ella's graduated, that, like I was telling you earlier, and no girls around. She said, "All of her attention in micromanaging, everything's focused on me." That worries me a lot. It really worries me. But everything, everything's good. But we're still around. I'm on, I'm on the road quite a bit, but it's, it's a lot of fun. I enjoy it. I try to stay out of the politics and focus more on the policy and the challenges, so.
Thank you for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You would have saved a lot of money and time.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Ron Courtney has a proposal for the, for town assets, basically. We're not going to recommend any action this evening, but he wants to show us what he can do. And my, my thought would be that if we want to move forward with it, that we refer any kind of proposal to the tourism people and Mary Hansen for her to see how it fits in with what she's got to do. But we can at least see what you've got going.
Sure.
And how it works so that everybody's familiar, the public as well as the council.
Right.
And anything else I need to say? Mr. Courtney?
No, I'm going to try to do the best I can.
Okay.
Okay, I, thank you for having me here tonight. I've lived here for 40 years, and in those 40 years, I've seen a lot of businesses come and go, dozens of them, coming and going. And there are lots of reasons why businesses don't succeed, but in Urbana, the main reason, in my opinion, is simply a lack of traffic. We have a lack of foot traffic here. People come in with a new idea, a new business, they think that everything's going to be great, and nobody comes in because there's nobody here except for us, the people who live here. Now, if you take a town like Kilmarnock, for example, which has a major thoroughfare going right straight through it, and you've got people going somewhere, people don't, this is a town that people go to, they don't go through unless they live here. And the people who live here are not going to come back and spend a lot of money in the town except for at restaurants and the drugstore and that sort of thing. So you need some way to bring people here. You need some way to show people how one, we have a lot of advantages here, a lot of things that people would be interested in seeing if they only knew about them. Now, I'm involved with, with virtual tours, and I'll just take one second to explain to you, if anyone doesn't know what a virtual tour is. It's a series of images that are 360 degrees, and they are stitched together, we call it. Now, a person in Charlottesville, or Richmond, or Fredericksburg, or London, or Paris, or anywhere, could tour the town of Urbana based on what we show them. And it's, it's something that immerses you in the experience all the way around, 360 degrees. You control, unlike a video, you control it yourself. You can stop it, you can move on to the next scene, you can tour a shop, you can tour an art gallery. I've done all of these sorts of things. I'm going to show you two tonight, just, just as examples. One of them is the one I just finished for the Delta Ville Maritime Museum. They're very, very pleased with it, and I think it's gorgeous. I'm really proud of that one. The other one, I wouldn't show you ordinarily. It's my demo. It's the first one I ever did, other than my own house. I did it at Urbana just to learn. I wouldn't be showing it to anybody because I would do it very differently now. I'd do it better. But I want you to see a possibility of what you could be looking at if we did it properly. Okay? So if you have questions, sing out.
I'm going to try this now. This is much bigger than mine at home. This is one of Delta Ville. These little icons here are what you use to move one place to another. And it's music. I've got a soundtrack here, it's not quite as loud as I'd like it to be. But I don't hear it all, Marty. Now.
I'm sorry, Ron. I'm sorry, Marjorie, I don't think she can see.
I can see, I can see a portion of it.
Sir, I simply went there and talked with them. We went through the whole museum, took a couple of hours, and I learned what they wanted and how they wanted me to show it. And I went back four times to do this. It takes a fair amount of time. The icons that point down take you back. So if you want to go back to see where you just came from, you push that. Okay? Now, it moves by itself around if you wanted to. Okay, so we walked in, you've been to the first, you walked in, and this is where people probably would go, there's an reception desk. Chances are, they would go to here, and to the right, and they would see all of this. Okay? It's just like you were there.
Can you demonstrate the three, there you go.
Sorry, I should be doing this. You can turn it all around. I'm very good, I use a cursor at home a lot, so I'm not really terribly good at this. But basically, that's what you do. You can go anywhere you want to go in the museum within each particular screen. I'll go back to where I started here. Okay. So now, they ask, they, I disagree with them on one thing. We can put an icon here, and you can see a still photo of whatever it is that you want to look at. I'll show you, and I've done, I've done that a number of places on the, on the Urbana. So you see what you can do. And I'm not very good at this part of it. So if you want to read it, there it is. Okay, let's try to get it back. Hold on, either way, it doesn't matter. You can go all the way around. If I can just find that where we are, I'll be in good shape. Now, here's the, here's the boat shop where they, where they actually built things. They showed you how to do it. Here's the boat athlete, built, all the tools that are made. It's a wonderful way to see how this is all done. Again, we can go back if we want to, turn around. So you can be anywhere in the world, and you can get a great idea of what this is. They're very, very pleased with the, the, we don't, it's too early yet, but the statistics all it is, it increases your traffic by about 25% nationally. And we don't have it here, we just put this up last week, so we don't know yet about that part of it.
Are you offering the service to, like, small businesses or?
To small businesses, to.
Like showrooms and stores and stuff like that?
Yes, and also larger. You know, I'd like to do the town.
I have one for my business.
Yeah, one of the freshest I did was the fabric.
Precious.
This is called the pond section. All of these are models that people actually built. It was a big fan about 34 years ago to do these, and they managed to grab all these stores and put them up.
So, so the goal, so now we see what it can do, and the goal obviously would be to do what? The museum and the Scottish Factor store or?
I'll show you. Let's, let me, now, here's the other thing, I'm not sure about how to get, add this into that.
X off the top. If you're, if you're, if you're gonna want, click out at the top right.
Ah, way over here?
The X.
Okay, great.
There you go.
And then you'll have the.
Okay, now, this is what I did. Cold weather, trees are bare, not the right time to do it, but I was learning. Okay? I'm starting to start off where you would naturally start off if you're coming to the town. This is what you want to see.
Most beautiful view in the world.
You can pull it all around. Okay? Now, this fellow here appears a lot, looks a lot like me because I hide when I take these things because it takes me, too. And I don't want that, but there's no place to hide on the bridge.
This is true.
So there, I'm walking along.
It's a lie down.
It doesn't look like that. But you can see what people would see when they come in. Come on. Okay, here we go. So now, we're moving down here. Second shot I took was this marina with all the boats. And also, you get the other side of the bridge. I call it the residential side over here. So the people can see, we have actually two different areas here on either side of the bridge. I like this sound right now. This is a residential one here. Now, you can see to the right there, you can see here the store, which is the next place we're going to go. And there it is. Now, that's very nice, but let's see if we can't see it a little larger. Okay? That's a wood store. You can go back if you want to. You can go all the way around. You see part of the church.
And I, I think we can see, you know, what this is about at this point and, and the benefit and.
There's one thing I do want to show you. I'll go through this very quickly. Okay? You can see what I've done, basically. Yeah, this is a store. And also the woman's club. What I'm wanting really gets it. Okay? Which, you know, aren't your pancakes right now? But that's what they do again. Now, here's what I want to show you. Whenever you see a camera, you touch that, and this is what happens.
Nice.
Okay? So anything we want to show in detail in Urbana, I can put that camera there. So, anything we want to show in detail in Urbana, I can put that camera there. I'll have it. Okay, one more there again, that'll be done. Okay, this is my favorite. Camera.
Nice.
There it is. You can read it. Camera. You can read it. Let me get inside, going up the steps, okay? Camera going in the door. And here it is. And this is the neatest part because I've got all of these different things. If you want to see the model, there it is.
Okay, Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
I think that's great. I think that's great.
Yeah, that's pretty awesome.
Yeah.
And so, we got an idea and so I...
And I can, I can, I can email it off to council so they can explore themselves.
We can do like that, so we can see everything that it does.
I think you've done an awesome job on that. That's really nice.
That was my first one. It was lots of fun.
Yeah, so...
Scary. But the thing I want to make clear is, it's not designed to sell any product. It's only designed to do one thing, and that's to bring traffic into the location, whatever that location is, any kind of commercial location. I think we should do the whole town. And I'd like to work with one or two people, we'll go through the whole town, you tell me, you show me what you want me to do, and I'll do it all. And then we'll put it out, it can go, it can be emailed out to people, it can be put on Facebook, it can be put on Instagram, and it can be embedded in the town website. All of those things. It's great technology.
I think that's a great idea.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
And then, Tammy, can you just like the X's on everything?
And so...
Thank you.
So that's, that's the demonstration. It looks like a pretty interesting tool to be. And, and do we need a, any kind of motion or should I just direct them to give a proposal to?
You don't need a motion.
Yeah.
We can follow up.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Courtney, that's very beautiful work.
Maybe you can give us piecemeal prices of, you know, what it would take to do different parts so that we know what we're getting into.
Well, once I know what you want, I can tell you what you want.
Right.
But I have an idea of exactly what you want right now.
All right, that's fair.
So I'd like to work with one or two people.
I would love to work with you on it.
Well, I'll work with whoever wants to work with me on it.
Right, and...
I think the idea was, we have a committee that has been putting together a strategic plan for tourism. And Roy and I received the draft of that and we'll have a final meeting, I think this next week, on that. And so we want to make sure that as we go forward, that we, we do things that, that align with that strategic plan, that all of those committee members spent so much time and put a lot of thought into. And so, it's, I think that's, that's part of the consideration is wanting to do these things so that we're not doing things piecemeal, but we're doing things that build towards some of the, the goals, the strategic goals that, that people have worked so hard on.
Is that under the planning commission or is that original?
Well, I think planning, I think planning commission is really what it ended up under, yeah, right.
And so you and Marjorie are on planning commission, right?
We're on planning commission and Roy, yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, for sure, send it to everybody in, in council, but the first two that should get it should be Marjorie and Mary.
And Roy. Or just send it to Roy. Send it to Roy and Roy will get it to us.
Send it to Roy or Martha and they'll distribute it.
Oh, actually, you don't even have to.
Martha will send it to us.
Martha has to.
Okay, all right.
In the discontact, we'll go with that.
Any other questions for Ron?
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Next item, minutes. We have the minutes from April 27th and May 11th. Can I have a motion to accept them as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 27th, 2023, and May 11th, 2023 as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Hanson. Any discussion? All right, no discussion, let's take a vote. Sandy Sturgill?
Yes.
Mary Hansen?
Yes.
Alana Courtney?
Yes.
I say yes. Larry Tuning?
Yes.
Marjorie Austin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on, reports, town administrator.
Pool committee, pool contract with Heisler Construction has been signed and they have started bringing on subcontractors. And we met with the Sean, I can't think of his name, but anyway, the local, huh?
Parsley.
Yes. The local contractor that is going to be in charge of the construction and today, and he wants to start the demolition of the old pool on Monday. And unfortunately, Middlesex County zoning administrator is out until Monday. And I don't think there's going to be a problem with that because we've got all of the permits and everything signed and agreed upon. So I think Monday is going to be the beginning of the demolition of the pool. The boundary adjustment, the necessary paperwork has been submitted to the county attorney for submittal to the Middlesex County Circuit Court. As you know, Middlesex Board of Supervisors held their public hearing and voted to approve the boundary line adjustment. And town council voted at the last meeting to approve it after holding a public hearing. And this is going to bring approximately 22 acres into the town limits. Churchview Septic Services, Michelle and I met with Anthony Santucci-Kirchi, the general manager of Churchview Septic. As you probably know, the Langfords sold the business several months ago. And, and our concern was about how prices were gonna be impacted with the new ownership. And we met with this gentleman who is the general manager. And he has assured us that the trash pickup services are not going up. And he would stay with the same contract and the same agreements that we had prior to the buyout would remain the same. And we were assured they wanted to continue to maintain the same relationship that we had with the Langfords. The Independence Day celebration is being held Friday, June 30th. Festivities begin at 5:00 PM at the Marina. And this includes food being provided by Middlesex Fire Department, DJ playing music, a boat parade. And the lineup of boats begins at 6:30 PM. The parade will begin at 7:00 and the fireworks will kick off at approximately 9:00 PM depending on when dusk is. The Bristow Pavilion is scheduled to be dedicated Saturday, July 1st at 11:00 AM. And at 4:00 PM, thanks to Second Saturdays, we will be having the band Abbey Road playing from 4 to 8 in the new pavilion.
Oh, nice.
That's great.
And that concludes my report.
All right. Any questions or comments for Gar? Moving on, treasurer's report. Michelle?
Um, as per submitted, and I just want to mention that the interest was $6,066 to the full account. So that was a nice donation. I invested the sale of Old Town Hall, also the CNS, short term for upcoming purchase and at an interest rate of 4.5%.
Excellent, cool.
So, meals, tax, and all is on the incline. We do have a new restaurant, so you'll notice that the meals taxes have increased and will continue to do so through the summer months. We have, I don't have the exact number, Gulf Park permits have slowed down, but we had a breaking record of permits. Lots of folks, brand new carts coming to town. So, that's really good. The business licenses are still flowing in, which they are due by July 1st. And that's all the, oh. I was privileged to be able to attend the Virginia Treasurers Association Conference, which was held in Whitfield. It started on Saturday and I got home last night. It was an absolutely wonderful experience. Met a lot of treasurers, lots of knowledge, excellent food, and wonderful adult beverages. It was a really, really great experience to be able to take all that information in.
Nice.
That's good.
Before the adult beverages.
And lastly, I would like to see each and every one of you at the fire department tomorrow night at 5:00 PM for the military banner dedication. We have a guest speaker coming in, Sergeant Major Easter from the Marine Corps. He is soon going to be retiring out, so in the meantime, he's working part-time for the Middlesex Sheriff's Department. He is currently assigned to the Naval Weapons Station down in Yorktown. So he will be a guest speaker. We have some music and we have a great program planned. So please share the word and come on out and support all these veterans.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Michelle, you probably don't want to hear this again, but lodging tax, we've got to be proactive in collecting every penny that we're due from lodging taxes.
Well, Larry, let me tell you, the short-term rentals are my biggest headache.
Yeah.
They really, really are. Yeah, well, we currently have 15 short-term rentals, one plus one that just applied. Out of those 15, we have, we now have, remember before, we only had four that was compliant? We now have 11 that are compliant. We have two operating with no permit. A third one was recently discovered with no permit. One of them, the fourth one changed to a 30-day rental versus being an Airbnb. And one dropped, but we're holding, we're now up to 16.
16.
And if I could add that...
Forgot Andrea was there.
I believe that...
It's Andrea, sorry, it's Andrea.
Yeah.
One or more are known and violating.
Yep.
Yes.
So 2,000, 1,982 is what we collected? That was a prior month, so it was up.
Yes, but you also got to consider that some of the, the lingual fees that was collected in there. But reporting is my number one issue.
And that's not just the short-term rentals, that's all lodging taxes, correct? That is included in these numbers?
Right.
Okay, so the N and, yeah.
It was just, other than the short-term, it would be the N.
That's the only one.
Gar?
This is an ongoing headache.
Yep.
And, and, and it's totally out of control. And frankly, we're not on the same page here internally. So, I am suggesting that we put a hold on any approvals or recommendations of short-term rentals. I've asked to schedule a meeting with Roy, Michelle and I on Monday so that we can sit down and look at the current policy. And it's not just middle, I mean, just Urbana.
No, it's not.
It's, it's middle peninsula. We had an email earlier in the week from, and I think it was Matthews, that they have no policy. And so they were reaching out, trying to figure what, what to do. And everybody's got their own response. And frankly, I thought that our policy was, or our ordinance was probably one of the better ones. But the fact is, is that we need to get a handle on this because it's out of control and we need to get control of it.
And we're also losing housing.
Yes.
That we don't...
That we don't have and desperately need. And I just wanted to say that the planning commission is actively looking at this. Roy put together a, a series of documents for us to look at on what our, our historic approach was to it, what our current approach is, as well as several other localities. So it's, it's something we're actively, we really need.
Right, Mary Dawn, Dawn and Carol and I.
And I'm, again, I'm recommending that we do put a hold on this so that we can come up with a plan to present to the planning.
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah, and that makes perfect sense.
I mean, that's, that's our job.
Yeah, we got to be all on the same page and we have to be uniform amongst all the people that are applying and having these kinds of...
So do we need a motion or what do we need here?
No, we, we don't need a motion. And I don't really think anything needs to go to the planning commission. I think we just need to follow the rules that we have written down.
Right.
So for instance, the code violations, it clearly states in the rule that we can fine them $250. And if they don't pay it, then there's court costs and attorney fees involved.
Right.
But, so the... But we need to make sure that internally, we're not approving them.
Right.
Right.
Practically approve people, it makes it hard then to enforce against them.
Exactly.
So that's the whole purpose of the meeting on Monday is so that we can internally can get on the same page and then make recommendations moving forward as to how to best...
Right, so you're, you're working on a template. So going forward, it's going to be a uniform policy no matter who picks up the phone?
Right.
Absolutely, okay.
Right.
I'm not being critical of anybody, I just...
No, it's something that's an increasing problem.
I keep bringing it up because I think it's, it's a, it's a difficult issue to deal with, but we got to deal with it. And, and we need every penny we can get.
Larry, I can assure you that Michelle has been due diligence on, on trying to keep on top of this.
Yeah, I'm not questioning her.
And it's...
No, I can tell you, every time I come in, she's throwing a pen at some wall about one person not in compliance or another.
I think I bring it up because of the importance of it.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Finance committee didn't meet, but the end result is coming up later in terms of the budget, which was the major project recently. And that will be coming up for a vote to pass the budget going forward. Next, pool committee. Barbara, do you have anything that you want to say? The biggest thing is that the demolition of the old pool is coming up on Monday.
Coming up, yeah. We didn't have a meeting this past week because it was Juneteenth. And we are going to have a meeting Monday. Got a number of things to discuss.
Water committee. Martha, do you have anything? I wasn't there, Beth's not here.
Was no water committee.
There wasn't, we did, because we didn't have a quorum.
Didn't have a quorum, okay. All right. Planning commission?
Planning commission attempted to have a meeting but didn't have a quorum this last week. We continue to move ahead with, again, investigating kind of best practices and what we can do with regard to short-term rentals and looking at other kinds of infrastructure issues and projects that we want to move forward. And that's, that's it for planning commission.
Okay. Moving on, public comment. Oh, all right.
Thank you, Barbara Hartley, 450 Perkins Lane, Urbana. Couple of things I want to touch on. First, really briefly, I want to start with the short-term rentals. And I know there's a lot to be discussed about this, I just want to put in two cents. And I did send off to the staff recommendations that were partially, at least partially passed back in 2019. And I understand we've got a problem with missing files and all kinds of things like that, I won't get into. But I do want to say that the primary thing that I think we have to remember on these short-term rentals is that we did vote on saying, if you want to run a short-term rental in Airbnb or VRBO here in town, you must be a resident who lives in town. Means you can't be living in Gloucester, an open one here. We do have two that are already grandfathered in. And one was the Blue Tango because it was already set up before we established any rules. And the other one, actually, we made an exception for after the fact, and that's Rosie's Cottage because that was a special case because it was a derelict property that we had been after the owners to fix for years. And Pete Manschel got it and with his own sweat and blood fixed that thing up and turned that horrible mess into a thing of beauty. And although they do not live in town, they live very nearby, they are active, very active, very wonderful members of our community. And so we did make a, an exception to allow them to operate that here because they really are part of the community. So other than that, I think we just really need to stick to the plan that you have to live here. And there are some other things, but that's the most important one here, to save our neighborhoods. Okay?
One minute remaining.
Okay, pool committee. I just want to say, I know that there's a discussion about creating a standing committee for fundraising. Got six points why it's not a good idea, but I'm going to go right to number six, which is, a standing committee to raise funds for various projects during the year gives the impression that the town cannot properly budget for its assets. It is like setting up a beggar, a standing beggar. We, that's just not the way to do it. I will present my six points to the town council. but I would ask, do not, please do not vote to put this through tonight. There is too much to discuss and it's just not a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan? I can't read your last name.
VanHout.
VanHout, okay.
Well, I'm Ryan VanHout. I own Old Town Chimney Sweeps in Gloucester. Actually, a lot of familiar faces here, Old Town Stove and Hearth in Sluta. I recently purchased a building in Thirty-One Cross Street beside the Marina from Stewart. Kind of young and I was totally unaware of all the things that went into it because I did another one on Gloucester Main Street because I liked the niches. Kind of realized I'm the bad guy here now. My, my, my train of thought was, I thought that you would, because I, I have already rented it a few times. I was just notified that I'm at, I'm not in compliance, which I would love to be 100%. Think I might have spoke to Roy or Garth before purchasing the building. And then Eric Johnson was like, you know, it shouldn't be an issue. So instead of slowing down and doing my due diligence, I kind of just ran with the purchase before it hit the, the market. I would love to make it right. I would donate whatever I can, time or parking lots or anything I could to make it right. I was told it could be a thirty-day rental. That's really going to financially strap me a little bit if it doesn't work out. But, you know, the rules are rules, I should have did my due diligence. But I'm just asking for maybe some leniency. It's a beautiful place, it has been completely renovated. I've gotten, I've already rented it out like four times and people are just raving about it, five-star reviews. I wish I had more time to stay, they just love the shopping. I mean, I could, I could bring the reviews next time and just show you. So I'm just asking for some leniency, but I understand rules are rules. And I, after hearing this, I had no idea any of this was the case. I'm, I'm not even going to read my speech because y'all don't want to hear it, so, uh... But I'll be, I'll be working hand in hand with Phil. I didn't, I was so green, I didn't realize you even had to have a special permit or any of it for it. So I, I won't be that person, I promise, but, sorry.
Is this your mother's place?
It is beautiful.
It is, I mean, it is completely renovated. I mean, I got, I was going to let people rent my boat when they do it possibly because I have a boat from, in Wyrock. And I brought my boat down last weekend with my kid and his friends. We got to ride with dolphins, we came, we ate locally, great experience. I was just hoping other people could, because I've worked in Urbana my whole life, my chimney company since I was 12. And we lo, I've always loved Urbana. I did the house, I did the hotel chimney. I'm the one that had to seal that forty-foot thing sticking up out of the roof. So very familiar with all the local spots, but, you know, that's, I didn't realize this was a topic, I promise. Otherwise I wouldn't have came here and talked, so.
Mayor, I brought, brought it.
Well, it looks beautiful.
Thank you, yeah.
To collect the money.
Andrea has a question. Andrea, go ahead.
Sir, I'm sorry, my name is Andrea Harrod, I'm the town attorney and I'm, I'm under the weather, so...
Oh, no problem.
I apologize, I need to buy some, but I'm wondering, what is your position in the company that owns the property? Because the property's not titled in your name.
Uh, we did an owner finance. So Eric and I guess some family members put some money up and then I put a big chunk of money down. And then we have a settlement plan to close the final remaining payment in, I think, October. So it's an, it's...
And then, did you say that you did check with the town before you purchased the property?
No, I started to. I actually spoke to Garth or Roy once before, who advised me that they have meetings going on about the Airbnbs that I should slow down. But then I, I went through with the process anyway. I mean, my, my, my own stupidity, I'm not going to sit here and make excuses. I just got excited, I tend to do that sometimes with business stuff. And it was a beautiful place and I could see myself in it. I actually stayed there probably fifteen days a month, twelve days a month, myself.
Okay, well, because it, that use is not allowed in the D1 district.
Yeah, I, I was actually just learned that today, I believe, from Michelle. I had, I had no clue. Somebody reached out to me by phone a week ago when I was out of town. I have a company in Northern Virginia. So when I was out of town, she reached out to me and said someone, somebody reached out to me and said someone would be contacting me. It might have been Roy or Garth, yeah, yeah. So she did finally reach out to me today and I got all the bad news today. So I'm, I'm just going to be at y'all's mercy for moving forward. I want to comply, that's, that's how I run my business. So I'd like to, I, I, I'm unaware about all this.
Okay, thank you for answering my question.
Thank you, ma'am.
And sir, I, I just want to thank you because when I called you, you, you were very pleasant and you, you told me right from the get-go that you wanted to comply.
Yeah, yeah.
And basically what you said here.
Yeah, I had a little more sweet speech, but, uh...
I appreciate your honesty and willing to work with us.
Yeah, that's absolutely admirable, thank you.
I feel like it's a niche property, it's not like a little abandoned place, so...
Right.
Right.
Yeah, but, uh, rules are rules.
And it looks pretty.
I saw the pictures of it before, it was, it wasn't very pretty.
Careful, he...
That was his mom.
Stewart, I don't know if you met Stewart, but he was pretty, pretty proud of it.
All right. There's one more, and this is from Andy Anderson. Dear Mayor and Town Council Members, first, I am writing because it is too limiting to public, publicly speak. I don't know if, do I have to stop reading it three minutes?
Yep.
Yep.
Then maybe I should just enter this into the record and, and send it.
And then we can just edit.
I'll, I'll read for a couple of minutes here. This statement is why I am writing. And while I am unsure if Urbania is considered one of these, I suspect so, I respectfully disagree as follows. We have a business license and every building is listed as part of a business and taxed accordingly. We have two of the six apartments on Airbnb and these apartments have always been rented as the same physical property. Whether we rent them daily, weekly, or monthly should be irrelevant. We have not cut up any units. And this goes on for quite a bit. So I will make this available to the public, put it in Martha's hand to be entered into the record and emailed to all the members. All right?
Mr. Mayor, for the record, I just want to say that Andy has talked to me about this and I have told him on two separate occasions that Roy and I would sit down with him and try to talk through him with his concerns.
Okay.
And he has yet to do so, so...
All right. It gives us some reading to do. Next, anyone have any response to public comment?
Nope.
Moving on. Old Business. The next item on the agenda is the Council must approve the resolution for adoption of the budget and appropriation funds as discussed at the public hearing on June 8th. The fiscal impact is that we have to get it done by the end of the month. And so the recommendation is that we vote to approve the resolution and can I have a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the budget as prepared for the twenty-two, 2023, 2024 fiscal year?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the budget as prepared for the 23, 24 fiscal year.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All right, let's have a vote. Sandy Sturgill?
Yes.
Mary Hansen?
Yes.
Alana Courtney?
Yes.
I say yes. Larry Chuting?
Yes.
Mayor Marjorie?
For change.
Thank you, Mr. Chuting.
First one I've voted yes on in three years.
Yes.
That was me.
And Marjorie Austin. All right. It passes unanimously. Moving on. New Business. The next item is what Barbara Hartley was discussing, a project funding committee. The recommendation is being made because the town routinely is looking outside of the budget to help with funding for various projects. And we're always reinventing the wheel. The current big project is to fund the pool, the shortfall of the pool. And it was an idea that I came up with that if we created a project funding committee, that we might have a, an ongoing basis and interaction with county assets and, and institutional memory so that going forward, we didn't have to reinvent things at every turn. The first thing would be the funding of the pool, but it has been my experience that when I have gone looking for one thing, I sometimes uncover something else that would be useful or I discover a pathway I didn't know existed that will allow me to find some funds going forward. And you create these roads for the whole process that if we have it as a committee, and it may not work out, but if we have it as a committee, we may be able to pass that, especially with four-year terms coming up, so that we will have a body of, of learning that can help us do things as we go to fund the next well or we want to get some new playground equipment or whatever, the, the infrastructure grants that we're working on for the water system. And all of these things, if we have something in place so that people know that they've got somebody that they can turn to, that we can have that ready to go and a pathway moving forward. Like I said, the major thing was to have people working on the pool, but it's also for other things going forward. Do I have a sample motion here?
Yes, you do.
Where is that?
No.
Yes, at the bottom of the page.
Oh, there we go.
It's just long.
So anyhow, it is my recommendation that we form it and that we... Because when, when Larry brought up the thing at the, at, was it two meetings ago or last meeting? Asking for people to be out there for, looking for grants and trying to find pathways for grants and those sorts of things. Beth Justice, who's not here this evening, and Sandy Sturgill volunteered to go looking for those things and have, in response to that, made some contacts at the, at the county level to try and set up meetings with the people that are in the Middle Peninsula to try and help those things. And so it made sense to me to have them as the, at the forefront and to add two to four additional people that would be appointed through discussions with staff and volunteers to fill out other spots in that. So...
Do you want to talk?
Yeah. I guess the question is, do we have a motion and then talk, or do you want to...
Oh, yeah, no, get a motion.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to move to create a project funding committee. Do I have to read the rest of this?
Yes.
Yes.
Is it necessary?
Yes.
The purpose of the committee is to develop pathways, including but not limited to grants, donations, fundraisers, and loans for current and future town projects. The committee should be comprised of at least one member of council and can have four to six total members. Committee members can be either town residents, excuse me, or from the surrounding area.
Yeah, it should be from.
Okay, from the surrounding area. Initial committee to start with Sandy Sturgill as chair and Beth Justice as a member.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Now discussion.
In ten months, or eleven months, when this thing is coming to an end and we don't have the $400,000 that we need to pay for it, they're not going to be looking at a committee, they're going to be looking at all of us and saying, why not? We need, we need, we need to have people from council on this committee. And also, we need to create a committee that's going to create some institutional history.
Right.
In regards to how to, how to go about collecting money. That's going to be the biggest challenge of the next councils for the next hundred years, is find enough money to run this place. And the quickest way that we can find this money, because it's going to be on our shoulders, it's not going to be on anybody's out there, it's going to be on our shoulders. The quickest way we can figure out how to do it, we need to go ahead and do it. And if you think, I don't know what quickest way is, but I, I think if you do it through council members, it's going to go quicker than if you do it through a committee that might have one or two council members on it. I'm not saying there shouldn't be some people on, on the committee other than council members.
Right.
But it ought to be spearheaded by council members.
And that's the way this is designed?
Well, this just says one member of council.
Yeah, at least one member of council.
I think it should be more, or everybody on council should be a member.
You can't have a quorum.
Yeah, you can't have a quorum, so you couldn't have more.
But you've got two council members that already want to do it.
Right.
Exactly.
You know, Sandy and Beth, and...
Can I add to this as well, to piggyback on what Larry's saying? One of my concerns, and this is not to disparage Beth or Sandy and their interest in doing this, no one on this committee has, has a background in finding grants and writing grants. And we need that. I think if you want the fastest way to get there is to hire somebody. But I've already talked myself blue in the face about that and I'm, I'm done talking. I'm, I'm done, I'm just done. Because, you know, you cannot rely on volunteers who are going to cycle in, they're going to cycle out. It ends up putting an undue burden on our already existing staff because the grants can't come to us as a committee, they come to the town. The town has to monitor them, the, the town has to measure for compliance. All of that has to go through the town. If we paid somebody to do it, who was a professional and knew what to do and had an advisory committee, great, great, who could really help with that. But that's, that's my two cents. And that, this is not just about the pool, this is about, the pool is the current big need.
Exactly.
Yeah, so, and I'm done.
In, in keeping with that, though, you've seen the budget and, and, you know, it's razor-thin to begin with.
Yeah.
And...
But we choose, we do make choices. And, and I'm a team player. I, there are things that I would, I would wish were otherwise in the budget, but it, it needs to be passed. It needs to be passed. We make choices all the time about how we're going to spend money here, how we're going to spend money there. We, we need to start thinking more strategically about what some of our priorities are that may get us more money to do more of the things that we want and create the institutional knowledge. And that is not done through a volunteer committee.
Garth?
I'm, I'm, I'm going to speak out of turn here because Roy and I were brought on a little over two years ago now. And we were brought on because obviously council thought that the town was going in the wrong direction and y'all wanted to see things happen and done strategically. And I think we have done just that. And my philosophy about guidance and leadership has always been, you take one step at a time. And that's exactly how we've operated over the last two-plus years, is we've identified things that need and prioritized things that needed to come forward, things that council identified as being things that hadn't been done, that had been sitting there dormant forever. And we have made those things happen. And you look at all the projects that we've brought forward and all of them are coming to fruition here at one time. And so the next step, and I agree with you, Mary, that we do need grant writing, but at the time, that wasn't the priority. The priority was getting things done and getting things in order. And I think with the, with council and staff, we've been operating like a well-oil machine.
Absolutely.
And so, you know, we need to stick to the plan. And grants is important, but it's not because we've been sitting on our hands. We've got Middle Peninsula writing a grant, a big grant.
Right.
We, Roy and I talked to, to them about writing a grant for the pool, seeing if there was funds. I haven't been able to find any grant funding for the pool.
Pools are tough with grants.
Exactly.
But...
But they're working on it. And I applied for a grant with Joe Hyman a year ago and, and spent a couple of days on it and it got turned down. Most of the grants that you apply for are, they're complex and, and everybody wants to hew and cry, but get grants, get grants, get grants. Well, it's a process.
It is.
And, and it's a cumbersome process.
It is.
And most of the grants that you apply for get turned down. And if you do get them, you're held hostage by the federal government.
Exactly.
Because they, they tell you what you can spend those funds for.
Right.
So it, it's not, it's not as simple as all that. But I'm not saying that we shouldn't be doing that, I'm just saying it's a process.
Yeah, which is, again, why I'm...
It's a process, but next year and the year after, when that tax rate goes up, they're not going to be looking at you and Roy, they're going to be looking at us.
Oh, sure they will, Larry.
No, they're not, they're going to be looking at us.
I'll tell you who usually pays, the town administrator pays.
Hey, let's just agree that it's going to, it's going to be a group picture.
It's going to, yeah, it's going to be a group picture.
So, you know, we, we can move on from that. But... But any other discussion? I didn't mean to shut you off.
Just taking it all in. I agree with Mary. I mean, I really do agree that we need to spend money and get a grant writer.
So that our town administrator doesn't have to take that on, for instance.
Yeah.
But, you know, to do what you want.
And that's all well and good, but that's one of the things these people are doing is, is they're going to be reaching out to the people that, because the county does have staff, that that's what they do.
Exactly.
And they have agreed to work with us, but, you know.
But nobody's-
That doesn't mean they're going to do it for us.
But nobody's, nobody's working with them. And so that's part of the drill here, is to try to set up a pathway by which we can start doing this.
Budget, we can figure out a way to have a real grant writer.
Right.
Hope that we can find them, and maybe this committee can find a grant writer.
And when Mr. Hodges goes back to the, you know, the State House, he can, he can say, you know, Urbana could really use a grant writer, and we need to send them, you know, $50,000.
Put Urbana's grant writer in the budget.
Mr. Mayor, I just don't think that everybody remembers how this town is run. It's run through a mayor, and it's run through council. It's not run through a town administrator. It's not run through a town administrator.
Larry, read the state code. Read the state code.
Yes.
It's run by a town administrator.
It is, the-
Day-to-day is county administrator.
I need to get out of this.
The council sets the policy, and the administrator runs the task.
Sees it through, carries out the policy.
How can that be?
That's the law.
That's the law.
It's state code, it's law.
It's screwed up.
No, it's not.
Because we're the ones that end up having to pay for it all.
No, anyhow, that's moving into a different subject and for another time. That's, anyhow.
Delegate Hodges.
Any other discussion on the motion on the floor?
Mr. Hodges would like to speak.
Delegate Hodges.
And if I may, Mayor, I don't want to speak out of turn, but, you know, pursuing grants and so forth, but one thing you may look at is a salesperson to reach out to some foundations that have deep pockets.
Right, right.
Typically their families and so forth.
Right.
Get a salesperson, and they can write big checks.
Yep.
And many of them want to revitalize small communities and so forth. You don't have to remake grant writers.
Right.
Get a salesperson and go that way, and do some research on the foundation.
I think that's another part of the strategy.
Yeah, that is part of the strategy.
And what do you do in your spare time?
And if you've got a list-
I could be a really good salesman.
Keith, if you had a list of people, you know-
And you've got good connections, yes, sure.
Do some research and talk to some folks. But that would keep the way.
Garth, you have one more.
Sandy will be calling you.
I just wanted to say, I am not in disagreement with grants and this whole process. The point I was trying to make was, y'all set the priority of what y'all's expectation were of us, and we carried it out. And so, that's where we are.
And that, that discussion is over.
I won't say anymore, but I'd like to.
All right. Any other discussion about the motion on the floor?
No.
Okay. Let's, this motion has been made and seconded. Let's go for a vote. Sandy Sturgill.
Yes.
Mary Hansen.
Yes.
Alana Courtney.
Yes.
I say yes. Larry Chuning.
Yes.
Marjorie Austin.
No.
Motion passes 5-1. Beth Justice is in absence. All right. Friends of Urbana Construction, improvements to the Scottish Factor Store. Who is presenting that?
The background is, Friends of Urbana has been recognized by town council as an advisory group for the Scottish Factor Store Museum. They are a 501(c)(3) that is dedicated to preserving and promoting the history of the town, of Urbana, and the surrounding areas, the local parks like Tabor Park and so forth. Their focus has been to make improvements to the museum while maintaining the building's historical accuracy. Several years ago, the front porch of the building was replaced. Unfortunately, the job was not done properly, and has caused leaking to the foundation, and the porch is separating from the building. Friends of Urbana has been working with an architect that specializes in historic buildings, more specifically Scottish Factor Stores. They recently reached out to a contracting firm that specializes in such buildings and got an estimate to repair the foundation and the porch. The cost estimate is $250,000. Friends of Urbana plans to make grant applications for the funding and feel confident that they can get those funds necessary.
Nice.
Friends of Urbana is seeking a consensus from town council for them to move forward with applying for grants for this project. The group will be making a presentation at an upcoming meeting. Unfortunately, Penny was out of town. Aubrey is unable to be here because of family issues. But they need to start as soon as possible applying for these grants due to time constraints.
And so the fiscal impact for the town is zero, because they're looking for this to be funded by outside sources correctly.
Exactly.
So we need to, we need a motion, we just need to have a consensus.
Yep, I say go for it.
Anyone on council have any questions or disagreements?
I have a quick question, Garth. When was that porch put on?
Probably about five years ago. I'm not that old.
Five or six.
It was 2019, 2018.
Well, that's not that long ago.
Were you mayor then?
No, Diane was.
Diane was, yeah.
Who did the work?
I don't have a clue.
Uh-huh. Yeah. Nobody has a clue? That's weird.
I can look in the records, but I remember-
I mean, I'd be interested to know. I think it would be good to know who did it.
It is what it is. The guy was very well recommended. He had a background, I remember that, in that type of building and all. But as that was going through the process, he and his wife split up.
Is he the one that disappeared?
And there was lots and lots of issues because of that person's personal problems, and that's probably what created some of these issues.
Huh. Is that person still around?
We can look it up.
I get the feeling the answer is yes. I mean, I would like to know, simply because I would like to know who not to hire for something.
We can look it up.
Yeah.
I would just, I would just like clarification of what it is that the council is being asked to do.
Y'all are being asked to say it's okay for the Friends of Urbana to start applying for grants.
Just for them to do that.
Yes.
Why do they need our permission, I guess?
Because they're an advisory group.
It's a town, because it's a town asset?
It's your building.
Yeah, it's the town's building.
Okay.
Why don't we just ask the town and demonstrate?
Sorry for your dance.
Because, Larry, stop.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay? Because this is the way it works. We set the policy and direct the town administration to carry out the policy.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And so Garth needs to be able to let the Friends of Urbana know that the council is with them-
I'm on board.
-to continue this process.
Okay.
All right.